Meeting will come to order. Meeting is being televised and recorded. Is anyone in the audience recording? Any A and R's, Adam?
No.
Seven o'clock hearing, couple of clowns. I would like to proceed.
Mr. Hammy, why don't you take over?
Okay, I'll do that. For the record, my name is Phil Henry. Civil Design Group, we are the civil engineers of the project. If you recall, we were in front of the board a month ago, maybe a little over a month ago. And much of the discussion centered around the access drive on South Street. And if you recall, at that time, we had already been to the first zoning board of appeals hearing where at that meeting, there was discussion on whether to leave the curb cut as it was originally proposed, move it 20 feet back, or move it 40 feet back. And couple that with, there was some feedback from the board members with regards to site features that I'm going to walk you through tonight. So basically, what I'd like to discuss tonight is basically walk the board through what the result was of the zoning board of appeals meeting, which shouldn't take that long. Do you have that?
Oh, you want a laser pointer?
There you go. I thought I had that little thing.
There is a little stick, the laser pointer is easier.
No, it's not a laser pointer.
Yes, it is.
Oh, yours is. That's a mouse.
I thought I had this, did I have this last?
That's a mouse, if you put it on the screen.
Okay. Well, any of it, I just want to zoom in here. Just zoom.
Probably easier to see.
Yeah. I'd like to focus the attention on this access drive here. If you recall, our original plan was to bring the access drive straight out, in line with our internal access drive, and also in line with our restaurant across the street.
Not in line now.
It's not in line anymore. The, after discussion with the ZBA, they requested that we move it back 20 feet. We obliged, and what is currently shown here is the access drive 20 feet further back than what was originally proposed, so.
Now the opening looks like it's pretty much in line with the front coming straight across the front of your building. But into the parking spaces.
Adam, is anyone to zoom in for that?
Yeah.
So they can move 20 feet.
She'll line up.
Show Brooke, yeah.
More?
No, it's perfect.
Frank and Nancy's car, they're not lined up.
Yeah, our access drive lined up essentially through this internal access drive here, which lined up with Frank and Nancy's.
This stupid thing is more trouble than it's worth sometimes.
The, as I was saying, the internal access drive lined up with our once-proposed access drive that was essentially right here, lining up with the curb cuts on Frank and Nancy's across the street. Now, as it's proposed here, the access drive is shown here, the 30-foot curb cut. So would-be vehicles coming into South Street from the south, we need to make this left-hand turn and then make this left-hand turn to avoid this landscaped island here. Okay? So it was a compromise that we saw as not as a deal killer, but it's obviously not ideal for us, but we made a decision that we can live with that, certainly, so.
To move it where it is right now, which is 20 back, feet back, from its original location.
Yes, which is roughly in the same place where it is today. More or less. So essentially, that was the only change that we modified per our last planning board hearing about five weeks ago. Additionally, I'd also like to note that we've incorporated some of the requests that the planning board made the last time we were in front of you guys, and I'd like to walk you through those. The, we've extended, Adam, is there any we could pan down? I just want to show them this fence line. If you recall, our stockade, our cedar fence ended roughly here last time. We're now extending that fence all the way around along the front of South Street to provide some extra entrances from the...
From the neighbors going south on South Street.
We've also modified the public's crosswalks to conform to town code. I spoke with the DPW director, and I believe his assistant, and we're now proposing six-foot wide blue crosswalks with the bordered white stripe, as, you know, similar as you see around town. At the request of, I believe, a neighbor, we've added another accessible...
Handicap.
Yep, another accessible space, and then...
So where is the other one? Or is it one on each side? Okay.
There's one on each side. You can share the... And then lastly, if we could just pan down, Adam. The, a request was made to extend that crosswalk all the way to the Pump Island, so, which we've done. So those were, from my notes, the modifications that we needed to incorporate prior to this hearing today.
Phil, can you explain the do-not-block driveway?
Yep. Additionally, at the ZBA hearing, we've also, at the request of the board, have incorporated a do-not-block box, which is going to be essentially a 12-foot wide striped box as shown here, with a sign upstream of it as you're traveling southbound, and it's going to say "Do Not Block Driveway" signs. So we're also, so along with the crosswalk, the modified access drive, we're going to have a do-not-block box plus a sign traveling southbound from the north.
So you're saying you don't want people queuing in that blocked area?
Exactly. Yeah, so the idea is so that two, I believe, two or three cars can fit now...
Three cars.
Yeah, three cars can fit now on...
With that design right there.
Yeah, so from the light which is here, three cars can queue, so that fourth car, the idea is for him to stay up here and not block that. To allow for, essentially, the cars coming up South Street and...
That's going to help the business next door too, so I think that's a good idea. Should have been done a long time ago.
The curb cuts in front of Frank and Nancy's are in horrific condition. This is, that's Frank and Nancy's curb cut, and your curb cut, you can see, is about 15 to 20 feet closer to the corner, so that when you move it 20 feet back, then they will line up with Frank and Nancy's.
Well, that's in the current situation. You guys are modifying that even in your original scenario, so that would be pushed back, if not mistaken, right? So it would line up originally.
Yeah, once they move it back 20 feet.
Not once they move it back 20 feet, I don't think. I think originally, the way it was proposed, it would line up directly. Now it's going to be pushed back even further. That's the way it currently is. They're moving the convenience store back.
They don't line up right now.
Right, but they're changing that, they're moving the convenience store back.
That's right, and they're going to line up then.
That's what we said.
Regardless of the 20-foot, the decision by the ZBA to move the entranceway 20 foot back, and the, no, I understand what you're pointing at right here.
If they move this back 20 feet...
What I'm telling you though is that in their original plan, they were moving it back 20 feet.
No, they weren't. They were keeping it where it existed.
We were maintaining it substantially where it was. We were moving it back just ever so slightly, but now we're moving it back 20 feet, so more or less, it doesn't exactly line up with Frank and Nancy's, but essentially, the existing curb, as it lies today...
Show the curb cutting Frank and Nancy's.
So here's Frank and Nancy's curb, right here, do you see that opening?
Goes from the H and south to the E and street.
Yep. So the existing curb cut, and I have the survey plan, I'm sure, here electronically, but the inbound driveway, if you will, lines up with Frank and Nancy's, and the outbound lane sort of lies closer to Frank and Nancy's.
When you had it down more southerly, though, you said, I thought that's because you wanted it to line up between the Pump Island and the back of the parking spaces, so the cars would flow right in.
Exactly, and our original plan, it basically lined up exactly across. Now, we moved it back 20 feet, but because that now, now this edge, or the outbound lane, is opposite their outbound lane on Frank and Nancy's.
So it's not going to line up, wasn't going to line up before exactly, and it's not going to line up now exactly. It's still going to be a little bit of a mismatch.
But it's still going to allow three cars to queuing before that lock walks.
And if people obey the do-not-block driveway, and they maybe will after a period of time, then that'll really alleviate any situation.
That's going to help both, that's going to help both places, because now people going out of the restaurant can get some queuing too. That crosswalk that comes from the convenience store to the pumps, is there any way that you can put some additional lighting on that for at night, or what other kind of lighting are you going to have? Are you going to have a canopy over those pumps, I would assume?
Yes.
And are going to be lights hanging off of them already?
Yes, we have directional lighting that shines from the canopy itself toward the building to light that area.
That area.
Yeah.
Because there's going to be a lot of traffic going back and forth.
And correct me if I'm wrong, this triangle is the operator's site triangle, so that they can see all cars and all pumps, so it stands to reason that everything in here is going to be lit up enough for this person to be able to see everything that's going on here, so they can activate the emergency switches. At least that's my experience with gas stations, don't, if I'm incorrect. Phil, I'm going to infer that you did this, but just for the record, you did talk to the DPW about the box and the design of the paint on the lane?
I spoke to the DPW prior to our ZBA hearing pertaining to the crosswalk.
Okay, so you haven't talked to them about the box?
No.
Okay, because I know that we had an offline discussion afterwards about it being a standard solid line, and whether it would need to be gored, or there had to be, you know, a crossing of some sort to identify it as not a stop line, and it didn't reflect that, so I wasn't sure if you had talked to them yet.
No, but that's on our list to do.
Okay, and that's fine, I mean, that's an easy condition to add if they choose to go forward.
Well, I don't see anything wrong with the plan.
No.
John, you?
All set.
There was another option too, that they were going to move it back 40 feet.
Yeah.
No, I understand.
That was too far.
No, I understand, I think, and I just, I want to, I think you guys did a wonderful job of accommodating all of the concerns that all of the different regulatory agencies have had. I think adding the extra fence is phenomenal, I think all the other striping, you know, the other things you've added are fine. I think this is an example of kind of regulation getting in the way of the best function of a property, and I'm concerned about that, but at the same time, you know, I don't think our issues are something that I necessarily want to meddle with, so if you guys are comfortable with the way this is done, then I'm comfortable with the way this is done.
So what do they need now?
Okay.
Want to close your hearing? Do you want to actually, do you want to find out if there's any public comment?
Is there any public comment? Okay, if not, we, do we have a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a motion to approve with conditions?
I'll make a motion to approve with conditions.
I'd second it.
Let's run through the conditions. Construction hours are going to be eight to four thirty.
Eight to 4:30.
Eight to 4:30, generally, because there's, especially with the residents right in the back. Monday to Friday, 8:30 to noon on Saturdays, no Sundays or holidays.
All other boards.
Yeah, all other boards, you'll abide by all of the boards and commissions' decisions. You will verify the box with the DPW. We'll be a little bit more verbose in the decision, but...
In the crosswalk?
But they've already done the crosswalk.
Oh, you've done it already.
The plan, the construction will be done to the plan, and when you give me a final plan, that will be the date that goes in the decision. And unless the board has any other conditions, I don't think that there's anything...
The lighting, you will have that lighting?
Well, the lighting's already on the plan in the final set, so that's covered there.
Well, if you hadn't said that there was sufficient lighting, or what you think is sufficient for the crosswalk, I would have liked sufficient.
Other people are asking how long it's going to be closed, because they all use it. An hour and a half?
Not a minute longer than it needs to be, right?
Not a minute longer than it needs to be, yes. As far as for the construction time, roughly two to three months, if not a little bit more.
Oh, you know what? I think the board should add the condition that prior to construction, that they obtain their fuel storage permits. I know that Phil and I had a conversation about that, it's something they're going to have to do, and that way you at least cover yourself, so we don't end up with an open site. I don't think that's in their interest either, so it's just a... So those are the four conditions.
Okay, we had a motion to approve with conditions, the conditions have been written.
I'd second it.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is a vote, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are you going to sign those, the conditions?
Yeah, what I'll do is I'll, I write the decision, and I can't write it until I get your final plan.
Okay. Do you want, I read them to you?
Send me one full set of them, because I'll put it in my file, and I'll stamp it if you...
All right, so I'm going to send you one more?
Yeah, yeah, and just the one. And the date on that is will go in the decision, and if I have it in the next two weeks, I'll write the decision for them to sign at the next meeting, and then you'll be comfortable.
All right, yeah, I'll make a revision, I'll put a revision date in there, so.
Okay, and I imagine I can send you a draft too, if you wanted ahead of time, just to be sure.
Yeah, I would send it to...
Okay, sure.
The only way that that box isn't...
Yeah, that's all you need.
The problem with the picture is it's not to scale, and it has perspective, so it's very difficult to judge how big something actually is.
I see a pothole there, I recognize from three years ago.
Yes, but that's irrelevant, because you're looking at perspective. It's if, if I stand here, and John stands there, and you go stand next to John, or beyond John, I'm going to look much smaller than him, because he's closer to you. So it's hard to judge something in perspective. There's no scale to it.
I thought architectural drawing, I think I understand.
What's the next, what's next on there? Okay, we have a discussion on 386 Southford Street, site plan review, Wesdun LLC, Dunkin' Donuts with waivers.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, how are you?
I'm Pete Blaisdahl. Chris Brown couldn't be here tonight, so I'm going to fill in for him. In fact, it's Lusanna Francis, so she's with the... I'm just going to pass you out, I assume, Adam, correct?
Yes, it is.
I think Chris sent you a PDF of today, you guys are right on.
That is fantastic.
Our cable committee is good to us.
That's great.
That'll go right by my...
You guys almost don't even need me. And this isn't important, you can do it.
Did you get one right?
So Chris, just sort of discussing a few of the things that were discussed the last time we were here, so what I thought I would do is just summarize the changes that were made, I guess based on your discussions, is that okay, everybody? So these are in no particular order, so I'll just kind of go along with what we talked about.
Laser pointer? Because if you touch that, it's going to move and...
I wasn't even going to touch it, this is...
It's a touchscreen, too?
This one is.
I thought it was Star Wars here. Okay, so the first thing was we added some striping across the entrance here. This brick rock that was put here before is going to be removed. There's some concerns about some safety, about some folks actually walking here and getting too close to this pickup window, so a fence is going to be put here from the building out to the sidewalk, just to force people not to come in too close to the building and to stay out. The existing curving that is here, we're proposing to push it out a little bit, essentially narrowing the entrance from about 43 feet to about 28 feet, I understand that was discussed. This is going to be changed from a one-way, I'm sorry, from in and out to just an out, so it'll just be an exit only.
Right, because I looked at it this morning, and there was like, somebody was in the line, somebody was passing to go by them, to go out, come out, and there was a guy trying to come in.
So there was a little confusion there.
Coming up Southford Street, trying to turn in like that, it was a...
It wasn't working?
It wasn't good.
Okay, well, this hopefully will take care of it, then.
Yeah, that'll make a difference.
Okay, and Chris was proposing to put, we're going to put a couple of do-not-enter signs here, so that'll keep people coming down, take a right on Howe Street. We're going to re-stripe the parking area, so these lighter lines that you see below are the old existing parking, these other lines here will be the new areas. We're going to add new curving along Howe Street, so you see this old curving here will now be replaced with new curving. This is the old curb line here, we'll actually be picking up from here, bringing it around, so it'll be a little more green space in here, and this area here will be paved and will be ripped up and more green space there. Also, we're going to add some traffic arrows, just to help the circulation through the site a little bit.
Yeah, because even on Howe Street, you've got three ins and outs.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Three ins, yeah. Where's the, where's the station you order from?
Where's the station? Right, there's an order board here, sir.
Oh, okay.
And I believe this is the...
First window?
Yeah, that's the first window where I believe you pay, and then, you know, if you need, if, like I said, if you have something that's going to take a few minutes longer, what they're doing is they're just, again, jumping if I'm saying it correctly, you can pull forward to this window and pick up.
All right.
And then, like, again, like, this person doesn't have to wait for this person to go, they can go around. Again, this is all my knowledge of the Dunkin' Donuts industry from the owner. And that's essentially it, those are the changes that I believe we discussed the last time, that we incorporated into this plan. Chris has contacted someone at MassDOT, and basically, as I'm sure you all know, this is a Mass State Highway layout here, and anytime we do anything on their property, generally need to get either a permit from them, or we need to get at least some type of feedback, so we sent them a letter just asking, you know, what they would think about it in our discussions here with this board, you know.
Well, the dark black lines that come across the entrance, you have to get their permission for that, what is that going to be?
That's just going to be a crosswalk, a delineated painted crosswalk with the yellow.
Adam, does that have to conform to that blue?
No.
And white?
That's DOT, we don't really get a say in that. Have you spoken to the town DPW about Howe Street?
No.
Because that curb work is outside of your property?
Right.
In general, we're happy to have people fix our roads for us, so I don't think they're going to say no, but they may have standards that they're going to want you to meet. You'll probably need a road opening permit, all of that kind of fun stuff.
Okay, but we'll certainly keep them in the loop.
I don't think, like I said, it's free work on our roads that's going to make everything a little bit, look a little bit nicer, so I don't think it's a problem, I just think it's...
It's worth talking about.
If you start doing the work, one of them's going to drive by, and that's more problem than picking up the phone and giving them a call.
Good to know. Who's the gentleman we would speak to over there?
You want to speak to...
A lady, so.
Well, I'll say either Kenny Fairbanks or Joanna Paquin. And there's a couple of other very little things that I didn't see. I didn't see the do-not-enter signs on the plan.
Let's see.
I saw lots of notes.
You know what?
And I saw the mention of them in his email to me, but I didn't actually see them on the plan.
He might, he was doing a couple of little last-minute, this is the one that I signed this afternoon, so he might have sent you one that was a little before, but on this, on the plan that I gave you here tonight, paper copies.
That's fine.
This too called out.
And I did run this across the building inspector's desk, just as a matter of course, and his only request was that you actually put the ADA spaced signs in, not just the striping.
He want, oh, he wants handicap?
Correct.
Okay, that's no problem.
I mean, just as a matter of making it easier, so that somebody can't say, oh, well, there was ice on the ground, I didn't know it was...
Yeah. That's no problem, so we'll add ADA on, handicap parking signs.
And I don't think it holds anything up, it can easily be conditioned, and, you know, there's no real...
Yeah, no, that's, please, just throw that in your decision, and we'll add them in on our revised plan, and we're, like you said, we're probably going to, at your request, we'll give the DPW a call and see what they think about it.
Yeah, and I don't think that that's a problem to put in the condition either.
Does that about cover it? Does anybody else have any other?
Any other board members have anything? Any public comment?
Close the hearing?
Well, it's not a hearing, it's a discussion, so... Someone, does someone wish to make a motion to waive the public hearing?
I'd make a motion to waive the public hearing.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then... No, where were the waivers? I didn't have my paperwork.
I think we're essentially asking for everything.
Yeah, I mean, it was pretty much, it was a waiver of the public hearing, it was a waiver of all the planned requirements.
Yeah, essentially, you don't need a vote for me, just a...
No.
Because I missed the last discussion, just a...
Three is all it takes for site plan. So you want to vote to accept their package of waivers?
You gave a motion, Paul, to waive the public hearing and all the other waivers.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
And then, do you want to approve the modification? Because they are modifying their site plan, so you need to approve that as well. You waived the public hearing, you waived the plan requirements, now you approve the plan.
Nope. No, he can't.
I'll make a motion to approve the... Modifications to the existing site plan.
With conditions?
With the conditions.
The conditions you want to put down there.
I'd second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Good luck.
Thank you. And make sure you stop by and buy some coffee. Have a nice evening.
You too.
Pat, take care.
No, they're not. They're going to be, they're going to be painting, and I don't think there's too many residents.
You know, they did one good thing about that whole plan, they made this an out, no in. Out, no in. That was the best thing that they could do for that whole site plan.
Agreed.
I've seen cars almost hit each other head-on right there. Coming up and in, this one in, no, you've got a double lane with the windows.
That's right.
Is there a right turn only coming out of there?
No.
Either way.
Yep.
And now it's going to, no, now it can be either way. That Cumberland Farms, that's a great looking, that's a great looking building that's going up there.
I just wish the site would function the way that they had originally designed it.
Me too. With the opening down a little.
Correct.
Yeah, I was going to be all right with that, but then they changed it.
Well, under duress, but that's not necessarily relevant.
Did you see the colored picture of the building?
What's that? Yeah, I saw that.
You did?
Yeah, no, I love, I think, you know, those guys certainly did everything they could. My question is, in that type of situation where we think that the end, final plan that is being submitted is being, you know, outside of their own control, being directed by other regulatory agencies to be made less functional, which is something that at the end of the day, we're all going to be held responsible for, what type of recourse do we have in that type of scenario?
Well, they changed it in their own, because of the board of appeals. I certainly wouldn't be influenced by what the board of appeals did. We're independent, but myself... We could always accept less pay.
Yeah, the benefits are good, too. Let's complain.
I honestly don't know that there's a lot of recourse other than... I honestly don't know that there's a lot of recourse other than...
I'm not sure who you're talking about.
Sending correspondence to the zoning board expressing, you know, dissatisfaction with it, because they held up their own, their permit based on that fact, and you have no ability to force their hand to issue that permit. I mean, you could game the system, you could have approved them the last time they were here with the plan the way that it was, and sort of, you know, done and around, end around to the zoning board. No, I understand, I didn't want to play games with the... No, no, and I understand that, and I did go to their hearing at the zoning board, I expressed my concern and dissatisfaction with the moving of it and how it impacted the site. They seemed unconcerned with the function of the site and more concerned with only the function of South Street. And the reality is, I still, to this day, fail to see the benefit of one additional stack before it backs to the driveway, especially if then they're going to, you know, they suggested the "do not block the box," which is great. I think that's a fantastic thing to do, even if you paint it yellow and say, you know, please don't block the box. A lot of big cities do that at all their major intersections, they have the box, they've got the crosswalks that go diagonally across it, and it's successful. I'm, I guess, still a little, and the argument that seemed to be most prevalent was people turned right onto South Street to try and turn left into Cumberland Farms, and because the entrance is so close, they back up Route 20. And, you know... Which if you had the line striping in our location... Would potentially help, as long as people were obeying it. Okay.
Yeah, there's no enforcement, no one's going to sit there and force on them, and...
No, I understand.
Probably won't, probably not everybody will obey it.
I just, I think it's an example of how the, you know, the reviews made a site less functional and less safe, and I think that at some point reflects on us as well. I guess the other recourse would be on projects of this magnitude that require permits from both boards to potentially have joint hearings. That was basically one of my questions. And that's doable to a degree. I mean, there's nothing that says you can't do it. As long as you post a public meeting and you schedule the hearing appropriately, you could have joint hearings. The issue comes in scheduling that. They meet the third Thursday, you guys meet the second and fourth Tuesday. It's a matter of finding time that works for both boards, whether it's you, and then if it's you going to their meeting or you coming, them coming to your meeting, you run into the issue of, well, that's your turf, this is our turf, can we have a, well, and, but regardless of if individual members feel that way... Well, and, yeah, it can turn into, it can turn into, you know, a chest thumping contest.
Yep.
And maybe it doesn't. I think that having joint hearings would be hugely beneficial, because you both deal with some of the same issues, and then you each both, each deal with individual issues that if you were collaboratively working on it, might have some benefit. And again, like I said, it's a matter of finding a time and space that will hold everybody in an appropriate manner.
New business, Adam?
Just a reminder, you have draft rules and regulations.
When are we...
One month from tonight, you will be having a public hearing, so please be prepared. If you have questions, please let me know. I'm happy to sit down with you and go through them. I'm happy to answer any questions, but the meeting notice is going up on Thursday, so...
That's going to be...
Be prepared.
What's that?
The subdivision rules and regulations.
Regulations.
We have to have a public hearing for the board to accept them, so I'm scheduling it, and hopefully you are all prepared. In one of our meetings between now and then, can you just give a overview of the substantive changes? Yes.
Well, the problem is, Adam...
The answer to that is yes. Everything has changed.
One problem I have...
If somebody wants to know about that, Adam, all I got to do is open up the book and look at it.
But that's not, no, I think that's probably an oversimplification, because the previous rules and regs were about 26 pages long. These are outside of Form 66 pages.
Right.
There is no part of the old regs in the new regs. I basically started...
There's no way to compare. You'd have to be looking at the old one and try to pick up what you could off the new one and to see what the difference is.
Correct, and that's...
What is expected from us regarding that?
You have, you have to vote to accept these as the planning board rules and regulations for the subdivision of land.
Which would throw away all the other ones.
Correct.
And you have to hope that what we're reading is, we have nothing to compare it to, because you don't have the other one right next to you.
Of course, I mean, I can get, you should have the old rules and regs.
Well, you have the old rules, but I thought you said that...
So you changed every one of them?
The verbiage in this is completely different. It has all of the same points and covers all of the same plans. My feeling was that reading through the 2003 revisions, there was substantial structural and content issues that, in order for me to go through and try and reorder and redline that version, would have been two to three times the amount of work. So what I did was I started over and started going through and pulling out the information and putting together the information that I feel is most appropriate and...
Sounds like you added much more.
I added a fair amount of design and construction requirements on the back end.
To go from 30 pages to 64 pages?
And the majority of it is in design and construction. A lot of it is pulled directly from the Mass DOT manual.
What if we don't approve that?
Then you continue with the one that you have. The one that you have leaves a lot of gray area, doesn't give anybody an appreciable or easily understandable set of construction standards or rules to go by. It allows for arbitrary and capricious decisions and doesn't necess, and as you've seen, it allows for issues with the covenant. This covers a lot of those issues and closes a lot of those holes.
Eliminates them, or the probability of the gray areas and a lot of that.
Correct, it puts a lot more structure into it.
But what we're reading, and it's no offense, what we're reading is basically whatever you wanted to write. So if we skipped over some of it and didn't look at it, we'd be hoping that, and praying that it was what it ought to be, so...
Correct.
You really need to read it, and then try to, hope you remember what some of the old ones said, while you can reference them.
And in fairness, these were mailed out over 10 days ago. So by the time that we have the hearing, you'll have had them for six weeks. And I know it's kind of boring, I do this for a living, and reading these is boring, but you should be able to get through 65 pages in six weeks. It's not, it's not overly taxing. And again, all of Section 5 deals with construction standards, and a lot of it is referenced to Mass Highway. Section 4 is design standards that I worked on with the DPW director. So this isn't just, I didn't just sit down and say, oh, I'm going to make a bunch of fanciful, fun things for people to have to do.
Then why are we, why are we the only board that has to approve this?
Because you are the planning board, they are your rules and regulations. Per state law, you are the only people who can approve your own regulations.
As I asked you last, I'm going to, I'm just going to make a day for a couple of hours, I'm going to come up here and go with them step by step with you.
Wouldn't I do that, too?
Yeah, why don't we go together?
Not more than two of you, though. Can we do it in a meeting?
Yeah.
The, now, I was going to say, here's my, if you would like to have a special meeting to go over the rules and regs, we can do that. If you want to do it at a regular meeting, we can do that as well. What I don't want to do is put on the agenda to go over the rules and regs at a meeting and come in and sit here and go through section by section by section. I'm happy to have a question and answer period. I'll read through them. What I was thinking more was, I'll read through them, but if you could just go through the, you know, the sections that have substantive changes, I think, you know, I've definitely seen in my short time that there is a, you know, there's a lot that, which we can improve on, so I'm sure it's a welcome change, but just, I'll, you know, we can read through them and then...
Right, I'm just bringing it up because I want everybody to know that you've got to have some way to see what was there before versus what is there now.
You have the old ones in front of you, one through whatever, and you have the new ones here, one through...
But we talked about that.
So you could go...
They're not correlated.
It's not, Carl, it's not...
No, but...
The other sections are. Of course they are.
But the sections aren't numbered the same, but there is an A&R section, there's a preliminary plan, there's a definitive plan. I mean, you can find, and there is a table of contents, I mean, you can go through the existing ones, find what you're looking for in the table of contents, and go back to it, and do it that way. It's a little bit more work.
If I'm sitting here with you, I think you can reference what we want to compare, if I have any questions.
I can, I can certainly try.
What's the date of the public hearing?
The first, it will be the first meeting in April.
Tonight?
That sounds correct.
It is.
Yeah, it's set these to 12, 30 days. You all set?
Okay, minutes.
I'd make a motion, we approved the minutes as written.
February 26. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Any other correspondence, Adam?
Nope.
Any signatures?
Nope.
Anything else?
I just love you guys.
I do. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Make that motion, too.
Yeah, second.
Second and...
All those in favor?
Aye.